Okay. Okay, good morning.
Morning.
This is Delaware County Council meeting, April 26, 2022, Delaware County Commissioner's courtroom. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and let's see, how about Ryan Ballard? Want to lead us?
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, just a reminder, questions from public may be directed to the county council address at countycouncildist@co.bellaware.in.us. You can contact any of your council members throughout the month. Don't have to wait till the meeting to do that. And there will also be public comment at the end of the meeting. Denise, was the agenda advertised and posted? Denise isn't here, but it was. Yeah, okay. She was just here. All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I got to take roll call first?
Yeah, I guess we can. I don't have that on my agenda, but go ahead.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
President.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes, here.
Quakenbush?
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
And I've got a motion to approve the agenda from Piper.
Jane, second.
And a second from Jane. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Steve forgot that one. He don't have these. Okay. I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
Piper, second.
Piper and Lassiter. It's on the second.
Mr. Ballard?
Sorry, I got lost.
Agenda approval.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And I entertain an approval of the March meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions, corrections, changes from council? No. Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right, we have approval of the Delaware County Circuit Court magistrate letter of support from county council. Ben and Judge Wolf worked on a copy, and then we made some changes that would more or less include some of the conversation that we have to let the state legislature know that we did discuss this, and this is what we have as our draft for approval. I would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Discussion from council?
Well, just to point to clarify for anyone who wasn't here, this is for to create a magistrate, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yes, I'm Linda Ray Lou Wolf, a judge of Delaware Circuit III. I'm presiding judge this year. And to answer your question, this is a letter of support for Delaware Circuit Court judges to ask the General Assembly to establish a magistrate position for Delaware Circuit Courts. And this position would take the place of the master commissioner that's now in our budget.
I have a question, Judge. In the middle paragraph, second line, there's the word "his" in there. Is that the right word?
And which, I know it's the second paragraph, but which sentence are you referring?
The magistrate will be able to issue his own orders. Is "his" the right word?
Furthermore, the magistrate will be able to issue his own orders. I think I used the future tense in that since the position wasn't established yet. But obviously, if once the magistrate is established, then he certainly, it would be a present tense.
The current commissioner that would, if you don't mind, Judge Wolf, the current commissioner is a man.
Right.
And the same would be the one presumably that would take over the magistrate magistrate position. So in this context, that's why we use the male pronoun.
Right, that's why we use the word "his" because we intend to have Mr. Hollums continue as magistrate. I'm sorry, sir, I misunderstood your question.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. And Mr. Freeman, as soon as the letter is signed by everyone, please forward it to me as soon as you can.
Do you require the original?
Yes, please. I would think the study committee would appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll get it to you.
All right, we're on to the transfer financial addendums, and we'll start with transfers.
Okay, first step in the assessors, we have A 106, negative $30,409. B 106, positive $20,846. The last one, the numbers have changed from 177, that should be 212, and that is a positive $9,563, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
Mr. Carmichael, this is employee replacement?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think you guys correct me if I'm wrong, this was approved in Finance Committee?
Sign that so I can give it to the judge.
Oh, okay, great.
Guess so, yeah. I didn't mark it. There must not have been any comments.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Circuit Court. C 140, for pretrial screening analyst, negative $22,199. D 140, Assistant Court Reporter, positive $22,199. A 125, probation officer, negative $23,121. B 125, probation officer, positive $23,121. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Just to let you guys know, there was a lengthy discussion on this in Finance Committee concerning the probation officer. We went back to... Jeff, why don't you tell us what you're wanting to do here? Jeff, I think, did you send out that to all the council members?
I did. I brought additional copies for the council.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and pass that out, that'd be great.
All right, thank you. Mr. President, Jeff Hanser, Chief Probation Officer, the discussion centers around, we have a longtime veteran probation officer that's retiring. Her last day working will be April 29. She does have some benefit time that she will need to be paid out for. However, the pay disparity between her salary, what it is now, set by the state, probation officer salaries are set by the state. There's a schedule based upon years of service. So the pay disparity between a 25-year-plus officer and a zero-year officer is around $30,000. So I would like to, typically, there's a resolution that exists that was passed by council some years ago. Ron could probably tell you when. But there's a resolution that exists that prohibits a new employee from filling a vacancy until benefit time is fully paid out. So for my officer that's leaving, that would not be until June 3. I'm requesting special permission to fill, from the council, to fill that position effective May 2, so that I can get that new officer trained, up and going, and don't have to just kind of wait for that benefit time to run out. The concern and the rationale why the resolution was passed some time ago was that because positions had been filled, and by the end of the year, they would run out of money in October or November, the line item would zero out. We don't, there is not that concern. That cannot, I mean, it physically cannot happen, mathematically cannot happen with this position. So I would like to fill the vacant probation officer position with the new officer, and then the new officer is vacating a pretrial position. That position will be filled by a new person as well. And that, again, the same situation with that position, there's going to be a surplus or a balance left in that line item at the end of the year, even if the new person starts effective May 2. So that's what the memo outlines, is kind of ran through and gave an outline of the situation there. We haven't really been fully staffed up this year at all. We had a couple folks retire at the beginning of the year, and then this individual's leaving now, retiring as well. So, you know, I'm just ready to get my department fully staffed up, get everybody trained on board. We have a lot of work to do. Obviously, COVID had caused a backlog in some court stuff, injury trials and so forth, so we've been really busy. So it's pretty important that we get everybody, all hands on deck and get to work and get our positions filled.
Just for the record, would you explain why there's that $30,000 difference?
Yeah, so probation officer salaries are set by the state of Indiana. There's a minimum salary requirements based upon years of service. There are structural increases over the years. So for example, years zero through three, there's a yearly increase, and then years four through nine, there's a minimum, and then 10 through 14, and so forth. It goes up to 20 years. And then usually, the state puts a COLA, Cost of Living Allowance, increase each year as well. So local governments are compelled to follow that schedule, to have a credentialed and certified probation department. It's just kind of part of the statute. So a 27-year officer is making approximately $67,000 a year, a zero years of experience. And your years as a probation officer are the only thing that counts in that salary structure. So a zero-year probation officer, which is, who will be filling that vacancy, their salary is $36,000 and some, $36,300 a year. So again, about a $30,000 a year pay differential in that salary line item.
All right, before we get into questions, again, the Finance Committee meeting spent some time listening to this. Obviously, you guys have a letter from Jeff on this. I also asked Ben to see, there were a couple of questions whether or not this had an issue with our previous ordinance, which was 2017-005. And Ben, could you kind of just let the council members know what your thoughts were on that?
So ordinance 2017-005 is the ordinance defining and establishing the terms and procedures for hiring and replacing county employees. In that ordinance, there's a specific section, Section 7, that deals with the process for filling any vacant position. And that's where the language comes regarding having to at a minimum zero out the line item in the annual budget for that position, meaning that you cannot hire a replacement that would then cost more money to the county. However, there is no issue if the annual budget is going to have enough, for that position is going to have enough appropriated in the annual budget to cover through the year, as both of these hirings would meet that. So there is no issue with the hiring and vacancy ordinance. Furthermore, excuse me, Sheriff's Department deputies and correctional officers are exempt from that ordinance anyway. So there is no issue here.
So just a point of clarification, because it was budgeted for an employee $67,000, because they're going to overlap, and she's hiring it, what, $36,000 and some change or whatever, that's why you're saying that it won't, there'll be plenty of money left over in the budget for it, correct?
The purpose of the ordinance is to make sure that the annual budget line item is not exceeded at the end of the year, because there's going to be a payout of accrued benefits plus salary for the new employee. In this instance, even with the payout of the accrued benefits and the new salary, which is substantially less, we still end up with a positive balance in that line item from the annual budget. So there is no issue with the ordinance.
Well, last month, we kind of ran into the same issue on this, and we ended up denying that, but that was about a week's difference versus where you're at with, she's been there a long time, and the payout is much, much longer. So in my mind, this is a one-time step away from what we would normally do if we approved this.
Yeah, I think last time it was eight days, there was eight days, but, you know, this is '23, and, you know, there's a training aspect as well in that, so I understood, yeah, I understand it's a kind of one-time, kind of unusual circumstances.
Yeah, well, like I say, the Finance Committee left this up to council, to be council's decision. We didn't, we felt like we needed to do the research and bring the research to you guys, and here we are. So any other questions from council?
Yes, I would just like to clarify, Mr. Hanser, this is two positions. But to clarify, this is one employee retiring, and the person who's leaving another position to fill it.
Yes.
So it's really only one person leaving, and they're only leaving because of a retirement.
Correct. So there's one veteran officer that's retiring. The vacancy that they are leaving will be filled by a current probation department employee, a non-probation officer. But going in will be a brand-new probation officer, so make the minimum salary. And then the vacancy created by that person moving up will then be filled by a current county employee, not in our department. And they, but they're not a probation officer, so it's considered a support staff position. So they will be moving into that position. But like I mentioned, that our department has been, we've had vacancies this year. So the pretrial screening analyst position, I cite in my memo, it will also have the same dynamic as the probation officer position. There'll be a balance left at the end of the year, even starting the new person, May 2, as well.
Thank you.
And Ryan, just for your information, we're only talking about the position A 125 to B 125. The other one is just a, just a new hire on that.
Thank you for clarifying.
The two don't have anything to do with each other. This was, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, this, that dilemma was, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was in excess of $100,000 having to be added or taken out of the general fund when we didn't have an operating balance at the time, and we had to do something because it just wouldn't work. This is a very unique position, because that's why I asked you to explain how those salaries were set. They're not set by the local council.
Correct. Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks for the, I appreciate the detail that you put in there, you know, the time you put into putting this all on paper and bringing us up to speed at finance, and then again here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Communication Center. These are all for communication texts. I 108, negative $31,410.8. J 108, positive $31,410.8. B 107, negative $26,573.85. C 107, positive $26,573.85. Total zero.
Second.
A motion from Quakenbush, second from Piper. Is this the one that, okay, it's a different one? Okay, all right. These are just?
That's correct.
New hires, okay, all right.
So both two employees leaving, and then two employees replacing, correct?
Any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, EMS. We have C 129, Advanced EMT, negative $5,502. 140, I'm sorry, F 144, Paramedic, positive $5,502. D 147, Paramedic. This amount has changed from the original amount. It is a negative $34,278.08. And E 147, Paramedic, that has also changed to positive $34,278.08. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb?
Ballard.
Ballard, okay, sorry. I knew it was down that way somewhere. All right, any questions from council?
I have a quick question. So obviously, the second one, the 147, that's one paramedic leaving and replacing with another paramedic. Could you say what the 5,000 is?
Yeah, Megan Catito, Office Manager, Delaware County EMS. So after budget was approved last year, we made a change where we had an advanced EMT that became a paramedic. So we changed the name of the line items and made some money transfers to make sure there was enough. Well, after the budget was approved, it didn't carry over into this year, and I did not notice that until later on. So in order to get her the proper pay, I need to move money from that advanced EMT spot down to, because the name titles changed, the money did not. So medic money still went into the advanced, and advanced money still went into the medic line. So we had to flip-flop.
It's just a one-time?
Yeah, this is a one-time thing, because it's going to be, we'll put it, that, the way it should have been, will be on the budget for next year. But it was just after budget was approved was when she graduated medic school.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
We have J L. B 156, Correctional Officer, negative $25,263.68. C 156, Correctional Officer, positive $25,263.68. F 161, Cook, negative $20,473.64. G 161, Cook, positive $20,473.64. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
Ms. Marvick, as you clarify, this is just two employees leaving and being replaced?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And this was approved by Finance. Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is Muncie Metro Planning Commission. 102, Principal Planner, negative $26,454.01. A 102, Principal Planner, positive $26,454.01. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. All right, got it right.
I have it there.
Questions from council?
Yes, real fast, Ms. Marvick, is this obviously employee leaving being replaced? Is it outside employee, or is it a lateral transfer? Is it already a county employee that's the replacement?
Oh, no, there's no replacement yet.
Okay.
Haven't, they haven't been hired yet.
But it will be.
It'll be an outside employee, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
J D A I 9109. 202, Food Items, positive $338.25. 340, Travel and Training, negative $338.25. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from?
Ron.
Quakenbush? All right. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Prosecutor, 118, Investigator, negative $25,519. A 118, Investigator, positive $25,519. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb?
Sir?
Questions from council?
Just briefly, to clarify, this is employee leaving, replacement? Thank you.
Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Statewide 911. 108 C, Training Coordinator, negative $40,898. 108 D, I'm sorry, normally we say, C 108, Training Coordinator, and then D 108, CAD Supervisor, positive $40,898. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
So this is the one that Fred Cummings, 911 Director?
Hold on a minute, I got a motion from?
Second for me.
Piper, second from Ballard. Okay.
So this was the one that President Alexander asked about last time. So we discussed this at the Finance Meeting. Basically what this is, it's a, I restructured a position within the 911 center.
Restate your name.
Fred Cummings, 911 Director. I restructured a position and combined two positions into one. We used to have a separate CAD supervisor. We also used to have a separate training coordinator. What I'm asking for, two motions in this, or two approvals in this line. One of them is to change it from the Training Coordinator to a new position called CAD Coordinator and Day Shift Supervisor. The second motion that I need approved after speaking to the Finance Committee, this position at the $4,898 was budgeted for the whole year at $19.66 an hour. I'm asking to pay this new person $20 an hour because we did combine two positions into one. It's not going to run into a budgetary issue. We haven't paid out of this line for the first four months of the year, so the extra .34 for the rest of the year is not going to, is not going to impact that. It's actually a savings. We were paying the CAD position 24-something an hour. I don't have the exact number in front of me, unfortunately. So we're actually going to, we're actually going to save over $4 an hour by combining these two positions. So there should be a certain, there will definitely be a surplus in the CAD position that's currently in the budget. There'll also be a savings in this line, even if I pay that amount.
Fred, I'm assuming you've worked with HR to update job title and description?
Yeah, there is a job description and everything on file, yeah.
Yep. Let me go back to that. Yes, this has already been through HR for a job description. We had discussion in Finance Committee, and again, the Finance Committee is going to leave this up to counsel as far as the decision goes. I think you did say that you're asking for two approvals. I think this is just one approval. If you approve this today, that will approve what he's doing. I guess my question is going to be to Ben on this one as well.
As to whether or not you need two?
I see Donna shaking her head, so we'll hear from her, too.
With this approval, you're approving... to me, you're approving it as is.
Right.
So I think you need two to say you agreed to increase the hourly rate. But I'm not the attorney.
Yeah, I do, too.
I'm not the attorney, so.
I was going to ask that question. Do we need that hourly rate in the motion?
I think you do because to me, as far as budgeting, what I've got in the salary we're in this right now, if you just approve it just like it is, then that hourly rate's not going to increase.
Just for clarification, so you're creating a new position that did not exist previously by combining...
That's correct.
Two other positions?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this line is budgeted at... currently at nineteen sixty-six is what the budget comes out to at that salary. I'm asking to go to twenty, which is thirty-four cents more.
Okay.
Because I combined two positions.
In that case, I think it would make sense to have a motion to approve the creation of the new position, which is CAD Supervisor?
Yeah.
At the hourly rate of twenty dollars an hour, and then you would approve the transfer of the line item specifically in a second motion?
What do we have on... right now, we have a motion to approve...
I can amend my motion, correct?
Now you have a motion to approve the transfer.
We have a motion to approve the transfer. Can we approve the transfer, then go back and approve?
I don't think the time... I mean, unless one of them fails, the timing, I don't think makes much of a difference. So you've got the motion on the table that you would either need to... you've got the motion that you would either need to table for the sake of a new motion, or you can take up the current motion and then make the motion on the creation of the position.
What's the pleasure, counsel? We've got a motion and a second on the floor right now.
They're going to after the...
I need to ask a question for clarification before I do it. You said the position was like nineteen sixty, somewhere around there. You had one.
It was nineteen sixty-six an hour, the way it sits right now.
And did you... I hear you say the other one was twenty-four?
Yeah, the original CAD position was twenty-four-something an hour. So there's a huge savings.
And you're combining the twenty-four and the nineteen sixty and paying twenty?
Correct.
Kudos to your employee. Awesome. I think this is what we talked about in that meeting guy. Okay, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, it's a way to combine two positions and end up saving money in the long run because otherwise, we could have hired a CAD position, paid them more than they were making as the supervisor, and then we still have to hire a supervisor as well. So this opens up the supervisor line that the person's currently in, which will, when we hire that position, will be paid the same amount. And this opens this line and still saves the CAD position line. So in essence, it's a savings of probably over thirty thousand dollars for the year, so.
Props for thinking outside the box. I think it sounds good.
Jessica, why don't you go ahead and withdraw your prior motion, and then you can make a motion on the creation of the new position?
I withdraw my original motion.
And who had the second?
Ballard.
Ryan.
I withdraw my second.
Thank you.
All right, then I'd like to move to approve to change the job description name from 108D to CAD Supervisor with the salary increase to twenty dollars an hour.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Does that cover it, Ben?
I think there are no other changes, correct? I think that covers it.
Any further questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Quaken Bush? Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Now we need a motion. Help us with that motion, Ben. What do we need to...
This is just the motion to... no, now we need a motion to approve the transfer of the line item.
Okay.
All right, then I will... so moved to transfer the money, not line item.
Got a motion from Piper. Need a second?
Second.
Second from Webb. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that moves us on to County General. We're ready.
And next is Addendums. Communication. We have D 130 Communication Tech negative nine thousand. C 134 Communication Tech negative seven thousand. D 115 Communication Tech negative seven thousand. F 125 Communication Tech negative nine thousand. H 109 Communication Tech negative nine thousand. J 108 Communication Tech negative four thousand. 198 Part-Time negative eighteen thousand. C 136 Positive one thousand, one eighty-four. And 196 Overtime Positive sixty-one thousand, eight sixteen, even, for a total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush.
We had quite a discussion about this at Finance, and Finance Committee approved it.
Anything you want to talk to us about?
No, I mean, you know, we did have a long discussion at Finance Meeting. You know, we are struggling to find people. We were down five positions. At one point, we're now down six. You know, one of the things we discussed at Finance, and I've had an opportunity to discuss with a lot of you, is one of the things we need to focus on is some type of a salary proposal to raise the salaries. That's one of the biggest attractions to people coming to work for us right now. So this basically, last year, out of the county budget, it was over a hundred and five thousand dollars spent in overtime. This year, it was budgeted at thirty-one-five, and we've already just about spent all of that. So what I did was go through the budget, the positions that we haven't paid out of yet this year, found this money to make these transfers so that we can make the overtime line hopefully go a lot closer to the end of the year, so.
And I would... any of the council members that haven't sat down with Fred, I would encourage you guys to sit down and listen to what he has to say on this. If you haven't got a meeting scheduled with him, I would get one scheduled. There's a lot of changes going on in the Communications Department, and it was good to sit down and see all that.
A lot of good changes.
Yep, a lot of good changes.
So if I could ask real quick, did I hear you correctly say there was thirty, thirty-something thousand budgeted for overtime?
Yeah, I think it was thirty-one-five. They spent a hundred and five thousand dollars last year, so. And that's just out of the county budget. That doesn't take out what was spent in overtime out of the 911 budget as well.
Is that safe to say your overtime budget for the year is depleted?
Yeah, it's got like one or two thousand dollars left in it. That's why this is an addendum. When I was going through the budget, I figured out that we weren't going to be able to pay past April, so that's why this addendum was done, to try to do a stopgap measure so that that doesn't happen.
So going forward, any issues, it would be either you continue to be creative, like you have been, or us appropriating more for the overtime?
So the original plan, the original plan, not going through the budget, I talked to the Audit's Office. I had a meeting with Steve and Donna to try to figure out how to fix this. And the original plan was actually to come to you next month and ask for a fifty-thousand-dollar additional appropriation. I was able to go through the budget and figure out where we could get some money in order to fund this line. Obviously, if we were a full staff and we were having this overtime problem, that wouldn't be the case. But right now, I was able to find the money. We can transfer it. We're good. So there won't be an additional appropriation request for it.
I know you're just still getting familiar with it because you wasn't here for the budget time, so good job for doing that.
Well, I want to thank Ryan Ballard, too. He's been on that committee quite a bit, and Fred told us he'd been very concerned and very attentive to what he's working on. Thank you.
Appreciate that, but it's all you guys. You guys are doing the heavy lifting, so it's amazing to see the changes and the positive change within that communications area, and it's, you know, because of you guys.
Well, it was up in the air so long with the city wanting to pull away and all that, so I realize that. I appreciate it very much because historically, as you know, that's one of my pets. I was one of those that was the commissioner at the time when he formulated that whole thing. Kind of had some bumps on the road. Very important to the community. Part of our lifeline.
Any more questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would say rather than have all these read in, let's motion to approve those as presented for the jail line items there from page one to page two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Webb, second from Piper. Thank you. Questions from counsel?
Yeah, real quick question. Can you just give me an update where we're at on the... how many correctional officers are we short?
Twelve as of today, but I was informed I've got a couple more laying on my desk that it'll be switching out. One's going from full-time to part-time. The other one's just leaving, so. Got two more. So that'll put us over a shift down on correctional officers.
Similar to Mr. Cummings was talking about his overtime budget. Have you paid... any idea where we're at on yours?
Overtime is over fifty percent gone. That's the reason I went ahead. I'm trying to be proactive and move the money now. I took all the clothing allowances, as you can see, that people who are not going to get those this year, any of them that, yes, they may get half, but I went ahead and took what I could, put it all over into overtime to try and at least help with the problem. And yes, you guys did increase our budget for overtime last year, so I'm hoping this will be enough, but I don't know.
And this is what, three correctional officers being replaced?
One, two, three. Three on this one, yeah, and then there was one on the other and one Cook on the other one.
Okay. Reason why?
And it's not that they're being replaced. I'm going ahead and moving the money so that if we get someone who apply, and by the way, we have no applications, then as soon as we would get someone and they test out and we can put them in, we can go ahead and put them on those lines rather than...
Those three are definitely gone.
Yes, they're gone.
I'm asking, I don't know if you've noticed, I've been asking, trying to keep track of how many employees are leaving, and I did the same thing last month, and I'm just trying to get a rough guess, and I know everybody's not eligible. I'm just a little pet project of mine. I'm just curious how many people cast in and cast out, so just keeping a tally.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And the same thing on Sheriff's 129. The next several line items are very similar. A lot of clothing allowance in here to gasoline in that, so motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Let's see, that was Piper on the motion and Ballard...
Webb.
Webb on the second. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, you can read the rest of them out, I think.
Okay. Back to statewide 911. We have 198 Part-Time negative ten thousand dollars. 197 Overtime positive ten thousand dollars. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Highway Department. C 127 Truck Driver negative thirty-one thousand, seven thirty-four, ten. D 127 Positive thirty-one thousand, seven thirty-four, ten. A 128 Negative twenty-eight thousand, nine forty-seven, sixty-eight. B 128 Positive twenty-eight thousand, nine forty-seven, sixty-eight. B 135 Negative thirty-two thousand, two forty-eight, twenty-eight. C 135 Positive thirty-two thousand, two forty-eight, twenty-eight. Total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from both directions. Where'd that come from?
Ron.
Ron.
Ron, okay. Ron Quaken Bush on the second. Questions from counsel?
Ms. Carey, could you clarify for the record, is three employees leaving?
It is. We actually, last month, we came for... we had two operators that retired. So we had two current truck drivers that moved into those operator positions. That's opening up the two truck driver spots, and then we had a truck driver that left, went to another company.
So only actually one actually left the county?
Correct, in this. Just to let you know, we do have six open truck driver positions.
This was discussed in the past. Is there any part of your budget that would help bring people up on the CDL to help them get their training?
We don't have any training in our budget, but that's something to look into for next year. As of February, you now are required to go through a schooling to get your CDL. You can't just go get your permit, do the testing on your own. You have to go through a schooling. So that is something we're going to have to look into because we don't have any applications, and it's going to be harder to get people if they don't currently have their CDL, and with our rate of pay is lower than a lot of other companies.
Ron, something I might tell you about. I've talked to Shannon. We're going to work on something with some kind of schooling to see if we could pay for something, you know, maybe make them be there for so many years. The problem is, we're facing, we're almost like a triple-A program, and the majors are coming and taking our workers at a higher rate. I mean, we're paying the low wages. There's nothing we can do about it. So we're going to have to figure out a way, and I'm working on something right now to try to recruit. I mean, they're recruiting our guys. I hate to be like that, but I've got a couple avenues. I'm trying to recruit myself now. So I'm going to have to find some companies that are paying lower than what we are and try to do some recruiting because, I mean, we're not even competitive at all. And like, I know there's nothing you guys can do about it or anything, but now with this CDL, having to go to school now, it's going to make it worse. I mean, people are going to steal our guys, and we've lost a lot of quality, good cream of the crop workers.
And I'm hearing that from other sectors. That's not just us or even...
Yeah, it's pretty much everywhere.
It's the new requirement for schooling is making it much more difficult.
Yes.
And I'm going to get together with some of the other superintendents around the state. I've kind of reached out to a few. We're going to see. I don't know if there's exemption we can put on for them, just give them some schooling without a CDL and have some kind of exemption where they can only plow or patch in the county trucks. I don't know if something could be passed. It'd be a law that would have to be passed or something, probably. So, I mean, there's a lot of avenues. I'm trying to search and find something because there's such a big difference in a, you know, contractor out here hiring these. I won't mention any names, but, you know, they're paying thirty-two dollars an hour. We're paying, what, nineteen?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty dollars, you know. It's a no-brainer. So what I got to do now is find someone that pays under our wages, and I've been popping in places, and I'm going to try to recruit some drivers.
So Tommy, these truck drivers, nineteen, twenty-three an hour, what's the difference between if I... if I hired a 19, 23 an hour, and a truck driver's been there 10 years?
Um, the longevity, the longevity.
The longevity add-in, that's going to be your only difference.
Now, someone educate me here, because I've not been around as long as some of you guys, but is it the longevity, something that's grandfathered in? Not everybody has that anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, and you're, we're talking about the 60% of longevity, not longevity. Two different things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
How about a roll call? We're going to need a roll call on that.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Jail Loewit. O-1, clothing allowance, negative $5,250. 197, overtime, positive $5,250. A-109, correctional officer, negative $254.67. B-109, correctional officer, negative $1,0040350. D-107, correctional officer, negative $4,021058. 197, overtime, positive $5,86875. Total zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from?
Jane.
Jane Lassiter. Questions from council?
Yes, real fast. What exactly is pulling from these correctional officers for that overtime? I said they're all different amounts, and.
When I have moved lines, if someone calls in sick, obviously, it changes how much money is going to be left on a line from when I go to figure it at the end to move it. So I've gone through now, I've cleaned up all the lines, I knew exactly how much had to be left to get us through the end. So that's why there's different amounts on every one of them.
Just miscellaneous.
Yes, just cleaning them up.
Okay, thank you.
And that was approved in finance.
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and if there's nothing else, I think we are ready for the motion.
Now, we've got to do our transfers.
What about?
We've got to do the general.
Yes, we should.
The financials.
The appropriations.
You haven't done the appropriations yet?
I've got lots of pages here.
No, we've got to do the financial now.
Oh. Yeah. That was just a transfer.
Yeah. Lots of transfers today.
All right.
We did, but we haven't done these. What have you got?
Prosecutor and all that stuff.
Yeah, this is appropriations, right? Red?
Ready.
Okay. Prosecutor. 441, computer equipment, positive $1,750. 442, furniture, positive $6,465. Total, $8,215.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Want to tell us real quick what that is?
Well, the computer equipment is our server. We've overloaded it, and so we had to add an additional, called a NAS system. I have no idea what it means. I just know we can put more stuff in it. And that's for the purchase of that from IT for us. And then, the other, the furniture is for Eric's desk that's falling apart, and some chairs that we needed to replace. But this money is, this is not county general money. This is our money from state forfeitures.
Kind of desk Eric got?
I was getting ready to add the same question.
Well, all that's not Eric's desk, but it's a big one, let me tell you. Yeah. I'm pretty sure that desk was from, I'm not so sure it wasn't from when Rick Reed was here, so it's pretty old.
They don't have any desks in the forfeiture funds? Just cash?
So therefore, we turn it into a desk.
Well, for point of information, under normal circumstances, that would have came out of the commissioner's budget for furnishings for the building. So that does take a little relief on the county general's balance. So we appreciate that. No matter how big the desk is.
We normally buy our own furniture and stuff out of funds we have, so.
How many chairs are we talking about?
Um, there's two, three, four, five, six, seven chairs.
Quite a few.
Big desk.
And a big desk.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Statewide 911. 323, training travel expense, positive $9,000. 393, training, positive $4,000. 368 maintenance, positive $18,000. 363, software, $30,000. 443, PSAP equipment, positive $18,000, for a total of $79,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion for Piper, second from Ballard. This is one we kind of went back and forth on, and we thought we found a way to save some money, but we were, we were, once we did, once we added things back in, we were right back where we started, so.
Help me out here. I put 78,000.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy, it's 79, yep.
Okay.
So this is coming from the state 911.
So this is from the state 911. So just to go through these by line, so the first one is actually, it's conference and travel expenses that were never put in the budget this year. Basically, what that pays for is attendance at the?
Restate your name again, please.
Fred Cummings, 911 Director. I feel like I'm the only one that's ever asked to do that.
The only one to miss this.
So, one of the things they didn't budget for this year, that they can budget for, is the national conference and the statewide conference. They actually pay for lodging, food, airfare, everything, so that's what, that's what these two expenses are for, the training and the training and travel expenses. It will be less next year, because the international conference is actually in Nashville versus Anaheim, California. Unfortunately, California is incredibly expensive, and that's why the amount is the way that it is to share. So the $15,000 building equipment is for AC repair, for our AC unit in the dispatch center. That was part of the $18,000 for the maintenance line. The other $3,000 is we are actually, as part of the renovation, going to repaint the dispatch center.
Fifteen and three.
So, those are those two lines. The $30,000 software stuff, so that, we upgraded our, what's called the Rave system, which is the smart 911 and a notification system. So that's the first-year payment for that. There'll be recurring maintenance costs for the software that we purchased this year already, but it'll be much less than, than obviously, the initial purchase price. This also includes the renewal for our guide card software and a paging module for our CAD system. The $18,000 PSAP equipment actually is for all the computers that we needed to replace this year, which were never budgeted for. We ended up replacing five desktops, two laptops. We purchased all new monitors for the, the new PSET furniture that's coming in, the new consoles, and there's some cabling costs in there for us to switch over to the EOC when we're doing our renovation later this summer and fall. So, that's where the $18,000 is. And most of that renovation was coming out of, is it, was it the ARP money? Yeah. Is that right? Okay, for what's going on over there. Like I say, if you guys haven't been over there yet, you can see it now before and then, or before and during, and then after, when it's done, so.
Yeah, I'd say that, I was over there, they've already made some significant changes. I mean, they do us some really good stuff over there. Scott pointed out something that I think's important to mention, that some of those renovations, if not all of it, are being paid for out of the ARP funds. And just like those renovations, this $79,000 here, this doesn't come out, this is for the tens and tens of thousands of people watching at home right now, that, uh?
Twenty.
That's 79,000.
Twenty, watching right now.
Doesn't come out of county general, that's out of the 911 fees and the state 911 fund. Much like the prosecutor's very, very lovely desk also comes out of the forfeiture fund, not the general fund. So just a point of clarification for everybody who's, you know, has ideas on how to save some money.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS, capital improvements. 4910, replacement transmitter, 443, positive $16,473, for a total, positive $16,473.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion for Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Did you read that it's 443 transmitter?
Yes.
Okay.
I said, actually, I said 4910 replacement transmitter, 443. We had to add in transmitter 443 into that line. It should have been written in there, and it wasn't.
Hmm, I got it.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Highway Community Crossing Grant. 310, contractual services, positive $211,97872, for the same total, $211,97872.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Do you want to go ahead and explain the, this a little bit? I mean, a lot of these next few line items are going with that, I guess, but.
Yes. Carrie Die, County Highway.
We talked about this at Finance, but, and it was approved through Finance.
So, we were awarded last fall, $473,60372. With that, this first one that's up, the 211, 97872, that is for a pavement preservation project, which is going to be on Cowan Road. It's going to be from 23rd Street to Fusion, and Fusion to State Route 67. So that 211 is what we're getting from the state to have appropriated. Later on, I think on the next page, is where our match money will come from.
Questions from council?
I have a quick question. Tommy, maybe you can help us out with this. This is, this is the one that was in the news earlier this week. The city got quite a bit, this is not that one.
No, this is, this is like the prior, there's two different, like, there's two different sessions. This is the last session of last year, which we'll carry into this year.
Okay, thanks for pointing that out.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Cumulative Bridge Community Crossing Grant. 310, contractual services. 500 North, 700 East, and 725 East. Positive $53,625. 310, contractual services, BR 269, positive $197,500. That makes a total of $251,125.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. I've got that second one as Floyd Drive from Finance.
Yeah.
I have that.
No, that one.
The first one, the $53,625, that is on a replacement, existing concrete slab structure, and it will be with aluminum box culvert, and that's on County Road 500 North, between 700 East and 725 East.
Second one. Can we elaborate what the second one is?
The second one is, it's a bridge, 269, it's a slip liner project. That's on Floyd Drive at No Name Creek.
Then this wipes out your, your fund for 9035, correct?
That is correct. That's all that we were awarded on the second call.
Okay.
Is that like a, just from my own knowledge, that 250 for that bridge, is that like a deck replacement? Is that a total bridge replacement? What's 250 get you?
You're talking about a Floyd Drive?
Yeah.
What is, it's a slip liner that actually goes in existing pipe. There's one way in, one way out in this addition, so there's no way to take that bridge out for a month. People can't get out. So it will go in, it will line that, they will drill some holes, potholes, or not potholes, but pile of holes at the top, and they will fill those full of concrete. They'll fill in everything. But it'll be a smooth liner, and the water will actually flow better through that than what it did the corrugated. So, it's just a, it's just a little more expensive way, but a better way when you're in those odd positions like that, because there's no way to close that road down.
Should you put that in and then remove the other one?
We don't do it. We have it contracted out. I mean, we can't, there's pretty much one specialist in the Midwest.
Okay, thanks, Tommy.
Does it on a lot of state projects, too.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna.
Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, Highway Restricted MVH. Three-twelve contractual services. Positive two-eleven, two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, nine-seventy-eight, seventy-two. For a total of two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, nine-seventy-eight, seventy-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb, and this is the match.
This is the match money for the Cowan Project.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supplemental Public Defender. Four-four-one. Office furniture and equipment. One, positive one-thousand-five-hundred. Total, one-thousand-five-hundred.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
I think Ryan had a question.
I was just going to...
Oh, alright.
What is that? Could you just briefly say real quick?
It's for a computer. We are borrowing one from IT right now. We had one that no longer works, so I requested permission from the State Public Defender Commission to use some of our supplemental funds to purchase a new computer, so this does not come out of County General. It comes out of our supplemental funds.
Thank you. Sorry, Scott, wasn't this vocal?
Oh, that's all right. Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ineligible standard deduction auditor. Three-ten contractual services, positive seventy-five-thousand dollars. Total, seventy-five-thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard, and this is a contract with the company to, well, the auditors. You guys can tell us what it's for. Go ahead.
To do our ineligible homesteads, where they go in and check if you've got a homestead here in another county. Probably won't need the whole seventy-five, but I just requested the seventy-five to make sure what's going to be covered. So far, we've brought in, I'm going to say, what, Becky, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, roughly? People that have had double homesteads, so...
So, basically, what you're saying is, whatever they find, it almost pretty much pays for itself on...
Right, they get a certain percentage of what the total was for, on each...
Sure.
It's a collection company.
Right, but what I'm getting is the properties identify that they can no longer claim the homestead. It'll pretty much offset this expense.
That's, the company gets a percentage for taking the time to go through and find all of those and then get them corrected.
Yeah.
And we haven't done this for a while.
Yeah, it's, what, Becky, three or five? Three? It's been three years since we did it, or three or four? Three?
Yeah, I think years back initially, we got these kind of cleaned up to the point where we felt like we didn't need to do it as, as often, and then now we're kind of back to...
People just can't believe they have two homesteads.
All right, any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance twenty-twenty-dash-zero-one-five.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Sorry about that, guys. I was, I had this sheet all marked up from Finance Committee, and I was thinking that we had already gone through it, but I'm glad you caught me on that.
They get you a different colored pen.
Yeah. All right, any questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Sorry. Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right, I don't believe, we have any committee reports? No ordinances or resolutions? Any department heads wish to speak? Okay.
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. You thought you wouldn't get to hear from me today, didn't you?
It was close. I'm surprised you didn't get up earlier.
Well, I let Judge Wolf handle it. So, I'm going to give you a heads up that we are out of funding, almost out of funding for our jury trials, and I'll probably be coming next, next month asking for transfers. I found some money in our budgets, but it's not going to get us very far. I've also requested money from the commissioners. They appoint, they had approved ARP funding for our mediation, and I'm asking to take some of that money and put it towards jury trials. So, I think that's more of our long-term solution. But short-term, I found some money, although some of that money's going to have to be used for some furniture replacement and probation. So, I've got to sit down with Jeff. We've got to go through and see what he needs, and then the rest of it can go into jury trials. But we're, we've already went through almost our, well, pretty much our entire main fund, and we're going to go through our secondary fund within the next three trials that we have scheduled. And it's only what, April, end of April? So, this is going to happen probably the next three years, because they're trying to get all the jury trials in that they lost over COVID. And then you've got all the filings that happened through COVID. So, everybody's trying to get the jury trials in. Not to mention that they're doing the big trials, which is all murder, F1s, F2s. So, those are going to be the more expensive trials. They're about five-thousand dollars apiece. So, it's eating our fund.
Well, we talked about this in Finance Committee, too, pretty lengthy, and we should probably expect this for the next couple of years.
I'd say two or three years.
Yeah.
And we got lucky, because the last couple of years, we didn't have anything, so that money just reverted back to County General. Along with my jury fee fund, it built up, and I do have quite a bit of money built up, but I don't want to deplete that fund, because it's, it only gets like two-thousand a quarter in it. So, it doesn't, by the end of the year, I don't have a full fund. So, I don't want to just deplete that fund, and then I don't have anything to go back on. So, I'm trying to find other ways. But I'm just giving you guys a heads up that we are blowing through that fund, but we are looking for other ways to get money in it.
Sounds like you've, you've taken all the steps, but have you publicly asked people to stop committing crimes yet?
I've tried, Ryan, I've tried. I think a lot of us would be out of jobs, though, too.
Hi, Michelle Harvey, Public Defender's Office. We are in the process of asking for ARP funds. We have lost, we're, we've already replaced, I think, four public defenders this year, and we are, we have two that are leaving the last of May. So, we are trying to use, to ask to use some of the ARP funds to supplement these cases. When somebody leaves, the new person has to take over their cases, plus they get their, their new cases that are being filed. So, we're trying to get ingenious without breaking our budget with supplementing some of their, if they have to go to trial, or if they're having to take more cases than usual. Because we've got a public defender quit, somebody has to take those cases. So, we're trying to get some incentive money for us to be able to say, hey, you're going to have to take some cases, but you're also going to get a couple thousand dollars extra for taking those Level-One, Level-Two felony cases. So, we're in that process, and we will be coming to you later to be able to appropriate that. But I kind of want to let you know what Mr. Brian and I are, are trying to accomplish, to stop the rollover of these public defenders. Because them, like the Sheriff's Department, they're, our employees are getting burned out, and they just keep taking cases, and it's a vicious cycle. You know, with the, with the COVID backlog of cases, and these guys get tired of having all these cases, so they quit. And they're getting more money from other counties, too. But then, our big problem is having to distribute the cases, because we have so many people that are qualified to handle a Level-One through five case, or one through four case. And then we have people who are only qualified to handle Level-Five and Level-Six felonies. The problem is, our people who are leaving are murder-qualified, Level-One-qualified, Level-Two-qualified, but are only applicants, of which it took us months to get two applicants to refill our, our two empty spaces, are only Level-Five and Six-qualified. So, then that makes the higher-qualified attorneys have, be forced to take some cases from other courts and everything else, that their schedules, their loads are already pretty full, and then they're having to take someone who's quit their higher-level felony cases. So, I just wanted to let you know, this is in the pipeline. We're going to work with the commissioners and try to get some of that money, so we can help keep some of these public defenders around Delaware County.
I was going to ask you, are you, I think I heard you just say that you're working with the commissioners on the ARP. Are you, are you talking to the state about them helping out with the backlog?
With extra funding? The state is, how shall I say this? Talking amongst themselves to see how they can help. They, they only have the funny, the money that the legislature gives them. So, as far as being able to just say, here, maybe this will help you get through the next three or four months, they...
The state has some ARP money available also, so I didn't know whether that...
The Public Defender Commission was not given that.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't get ARP money to be able to help the, the county level.
But I know this doesn't help you with the load, but are they talking about reducing the restrictions on the, the percentage of cases that you're current?
They are.
Are they, okay. Are they kind of waiving that for now to get caught up?
No, no, I'm sorry. They're, they're not wa, they're not by any means saying that an attorney can take more cases. They are, in fact, in twenty-twenty-four, I believe, the numbers that an attorney can take are actually going to go down a little bit.
Okay.
I have a question, Shelley. I, we were talking, we were speaking, I heard you say something about working with the commissioners, some ARP money and incentives and things like that. Help me with my memory. Was the public defenders included on the three-thousand-dollar employee retention bonus?
They were not.
They were not?
They got, they received one-thousand dollars, because even though they have full-time benefits, they are not considered full-time.
So, they got the part-time, so they got something, not really they got a thousand?
Yes, they got a thousand. And we are also working, hoping to get permission to use some of our supplemental fund, which we don't have a lot in our supplemental fund. And we do, we buy our computers, we buy our furnishings and things like that. And some of our budget that we do spend, office supplies and things like that, come out of our supplemental fund. So, we don't have a lot, but we're trying to work and see what we could maybe give our attorneys.
What about those two that are leaving in May? Are they retiring?
No.
Or not?
No.
There's two thousand right there.
What do you mean, there's two thousand?
Well, if I remember right, it was supposed to be the...
Oh, yeah, you're supposed to say, right.
It's supposed to stay a year, or they have to pay it back.
Right, right.
So, it's just if somebody's going to ask them or not.
Right. But both of those that are leaving are murder and higher-level qualified also. So, and we, we just can't get applicants. We had two applicants at the very last moment for our last, our last two that quit were murder-qualified, and we replaced, I'm sorry, one of them was murder-qualified. We replaced them with an eighty-four-year-old attorney who wanted to take the job, and with an attorney who has, he's not a young guy, but he doesn't have criminal experience, so... But Mr. Dunick, who we hired, is, he's only going to be able to handle Level-Fives and Sixes, so...
Mr. Dunick's doing the...
Yes, he's our new public defender.
How long does it take for a PD to become murder-qualified?
It takes, it takes three years of criminal law experience, and you have to have set at least second chair in, this is to become Level-One through Four-qualified. You have to have had three years of experience and have at least set second chair in at least three Level-One through Four cases, jury trials. And then to become murder-qualified, you have to have five years of criminal law experience and have set through, I believe it's five jury trials to be murder-qualified. So, the younger attorneys, the people who may be, I mean, they're getting paid thirty-two-thousand, nine-hundred dollars. So, those younger attorneys who are coming in, who that may be a good income for them for a little bit, it's, it's not going to keep them around Madison County. We've lost one to Madison County. We lost three to J County. So, we're, we're working through it. That's all we can do, just like every other department, so... I just wanted to let you know where we're, where we're thinking and what we may be asking. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I've got about five minutes before I jump on a Zoom call, so I'm sorry if I have to rush. I really don't have questions or a lot of comments for you. It's mostly to the ten thousands of people watching.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand people watching. You've heard today that, that there are lots of jobs in county government. County Highway has a half a dozen. Dispatch has a half a dozen. The jail has a dozen. We have two or three open merit deputies. We're going to be starting a application process very soon for merit deputy, if you want to be a full-time law enforcement officer. To be hired in the jail, we hire at eighteen years old. It's a great job for a young adult, somebody that might want to get into law enforcement. It looks great on a resume. It builds a lot of skills for you. It gives you county benefits. So, every once in a while, I hear somebody out in the community say, oh, I can't find a job. Well, that's a bunch of crap. You're not looking for a job. So, I just want to say, those jobs are available. Background check, drug check, drug screen, and a psych test. If you can pass those three things, you can come and work for us in jail. So, I just want to throw that out there. I know at Finance Committee, there were some questions or discussions about the jail. I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time, if anybody has any.
I don't recall what they were, but that was last Thursday, so...
I have a quick question. We've heard a little bit about the correctional officers being short-staffed. What's that led to as far as filling those? How are you maintaining that?
So, last summer, when we got to this critical point, we were pulling merit deputies off of the road and running them in rotations through the jail. We've started doing that again. We have two merit deputies working rotations through the jail. Last summer, our rotations were four-week rotations. This year, we're doing two-week rotations to kind of, I mean, guys that want to be, I say guys, people that want to be a police officer, they don't want to work in the jail. So, so it's, you know, they don't necessarily like that assignment. That's not what they signed up for, and that's not what we hired them for. So, we think that doing the two-week rotations will be better off. You know, they just don't have to spend as much, much time up there. But right now, we do have two, two full-time people off of the road who are working rotations in the jail.
Well, as a council member, at one time, I thought maybe housing federal prisoners would be a compliment to our budget, but right now, we have a six-million, two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one balance in the general fund, and I would discourage you from going after those federal prisoners, because it's just going to cause more population, more complications, more rules to follow. And as long as you're shorthanded with personnel, I discourage trying that. And I know you're doing that with a positive attitude, but I, the money is not as important now as getting people to manage the place and run it.
Well, I'd be glad to have that discussion with you, you know, over a cup of coffee. I think, I think the benefits that we've, we've seen over the past year, that where we've been housing the out-of-county inmates, I mean, by, by, by next week, we will, we will have been housing for twelve to thirteen months, and we will have brought the county about nine-hundred-thousand dollars. So, we are a big part of that six-million-dollar thing.
We've experienced that over the years.
I know, I know. But, but if you look back to two years ago, when COVID started, and you would have had an agency within county government to come to you and say, we're going to bring you eight-hundred to a million dollars a year, when during budget time of twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, you were asking people, asking office holders and, and people who run departments, are you sure you're going to use all that ink for the rest of the year? You know, can we have back twenty dollars in ink cartridges? I think that, that this is a, the, the benefits of this outweigh the, the negatives. Also, with the out-of-county and the, the federal people that we're trying to go after, they don't, they don't have court here. So, the majority of, of our burden on day shift and afternoons in the jail is simply the movement. It's taking people to, to court, to, to see an attorney, taking them out of the cell and, and transferring them over to this part of the jail. And then when they're done, transferring them back over to this part. Emily just got done telling you how, how many jury trials they've been having. The prosecutor's office and the courts have been killing it this year. They are, they are working their butts off, and it's because of the backlog. Well, that affects us in the jail also. That affects our court officers. I mean, we are, we are all an integrated team, but those people who are here from Henry County or Madison County or Vermillion County, they don't have court. They sit in that jail cell twenty-four hours a day. So, so really, that's not the biggest, we don't have a lot of burden with those out-of-county people. We don't.
Talking about out-of-county, Sheriff.
It's the same, it's the same thing. It's the same thing with the feds.
I could, I could say, as a councilman who worked a half a shift at the jail, I went up there and worked for four hours with a sergeant. From my perspective of the spoken wheel design, I, I don't think adding ten, twenty guys is really going to make that much of a difference. There was a whole block that wasn't even being used. So, for me personally, you know, I appreciate all the out-of-the-box thinking, and I say, this is a unique time, and we've got to think of creative and unique ways to generate the revenue. So, I think everything's on the table, and I appreciate you looking for it.
Thanks. Thank you. We've got to hit this meeting. I apologize for having to rush off.
You're fine, thank you. Any other department heads up? There we go.
Hi, Pam McCammon, HR Director. I just, I've sat here and I've listened to all these people, and we're seeing the main hit of it coming into our office, because I've been in HR forever. And like, when there was a job application open for correctional officer, we used to get stacks, stacks of applications. We're down to nothing. And I know it's affecting us, because we're losing our part-time girl, thanks to Jeff Hansard. And we can't even get an application for that job. And what's happening is, we're sending them out to Concentra to get their new higher blood test, or urine test, test, or urine test, and it's $42. It's raised from $18 to $42 since I've been there. So, it's $42, $4 gas, you can come up and work for me for 10.
What, they pay for their own?
They have to pay for their own, but they're also paying for their gas to get out there, and they come up here and make $10. And that's, it's just, it's just not happening, it's just not happening. I used to have people lined up for that part-time job, because usually, my part-time job leads into another full-time job somewhere in the county. And we can't even get, I finally got one yesterday, but we're not, it, it's just the, the money, it's just, now, I do have the problem, as far as the, the costing us so much, we're going to another provider that's going to be a lot cheaper, so people don't have to pay the $42. We're going to use our clinic for that, we've got the clinic set up to use that.
I was going to say, you might check with community corrections, too, they-
Well, they use, community correction does theirs, theirs doesn't come back as quickly as we want them to come back. I've had meetings and meetings with the clinic, and so we're getting that arranged, so they can walk in and do that. But it's just everywhere, I mean, it's everywhere, and it's like, there's no applications. I'll ask Jody up front, I'll say, Jody, how many applications do we have for the highway? None.
I've just never heard of anyone have to pay for their own drug screen to get employed.
The reason we did that, Ryan, years ago, is because people would, we would pay for it, it was when they were $18, and we would pay for it, and then they'd work two days and quit.
So, you want them to have an investment in their role?
Yes, I want them to do that. It might have to go back to where we pay for them.
Maybe it could be where, where it's something that is reimbursed to them if they stay, or something along those-
Yeah, and then, you know, that's, that's another hurdle you have to jump, like with the auditor's office, you have to get that money, you have to get a quiety to stand, and it's just an extra step that their office, nor my office, has time to do, but we might have to do that.
Right.
You know, none of this that I'm talking about has been approved by the commissioners, so we have to sit down, and we have to figure out how to get these people even interested.
You said something about a stack, I know before, we've talked about it, this is one of the last places that I'm aware of, that someone can walk in off the street, fill out an application, and, and hand it in, and I think that's awesome, because I, I like the, people get motivated to go out and look for their jobs, instead of sitting at a computer all day, trying to fulfill their obligation to receive unemployment. However, we talked about it once before, are we also doing digital applications online?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, we-
You can do both?
Yes, we can do both.
Great.
Our website, all they have to do is go to the website.
To the website, they have to go to Delaware-
Yeah, our Delaware County website, they have them there, they can pick them up in the hall, we have them at the hall at the Justice Center, and in front of our office, and if they call in and they're from out of town, we mail them to them, we mail them.
Like on Indeed, or anything like that?
We have tried Indeed, in fact, I said something to one of the girls yesterday, maybe we ought to put this on Indeed, you're just inundated.
With the unemployment-
I mean, with people that have no, yeah, they just go through unemployment, says, hey, apply to three people, and they hit the top three and send them in. So, yeah, we have done that, we've done the Ball State, we've done, you know, but no one wants to go, and they can go to all these and make 18 bucks an hour, or go to these different places and make more money.
It's tough.
Yeah, so, that's, I just wanted to say that it's, it's everywhere, I mean, the money's the problem. We're trying to work it out in our office, as far as the pre-employment test, but I don't know.
What you were talking about, or, or discussing earlier, was the, the position in your office, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, I thought so.
I have a part-time position open now, which I'm going to come to you at one point to go full-time, just putting it out there, but we just need a part-time person to sit up front. And see, we've consolidated the offices, I'm sure all of you know, we've consolidated the offices, so the person up front really helps Jenny in her office, and would help the veterans answer their calls, and do us, help us. So, a full-time position is really needed, but we're happy just to get an application for a part-time right now.
All right.
So, you guys feel sorry for us when we come to you.
Okay.
If I feel sorry, I would have thanked all the ones who've stayed with us.
Exactly, exactly, but I just kind of wanted to give mine, because it's not just, it's every department, every department, so.
And it's not even just every department, it's everywhere, I mean-
Oh, it is, exactly, it's not just here, yeah.
That's why you can't go into some restaurants and, and-
I know.
Only drive-through only, or, you know, there's all kinds of different hours-
And I don't get that, it's like, that's been long enough, they ought to be-
It's truck drivers in other areas, too, I know the ag, ag's having trouble with truck drivers, and I talked to, talked to you the, the other day about whether we need to, to see if we can't take a look at reducing what they have to do as far as CDL for municipal and ag groups.
Yeah, and I feel sorry for the highway, because they have to go to a class, and the class is $2,600.
I think up to $4,000.
Okay, yeah, of, of money they have to spend before they even get their CDL.
I know nobody wants to, wants to talk about it, but from what I'm hearing, from department after department after department, everybody's underpaid, everybody's short-staffed, I mean, we can't just create the money out of thin air, it might just be time to make some consolidations, and spread the work around fewer people.
See, we thought that would help, in, in the Commissioner's Department saying, we did consolidate, but the consolidation only made us need a full-time, so.
Well, that's the other issue we run into, if we, if we start adding full-time people, then that takes up income that we would have to put towards workforce for salary increases.
But we did the consolidation, like, we thought that would help us.
Right.
Instead of Jenny having a person, and the veterans having a person, and, because Jenny's going through her part-time money like crazy.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm getting at is, if you had a staff of, I'll just say 20 people, and five of them were suddenly injured, or out for three months with surgery, whatever it may be, you'd have, they'd have to figure out how to make it work, they'd figure that out.
Right.
Obviously, they'd want more pay for that, but maybe that's a balanced raise to pay, but reduce the workforce, and it's a, it's an uncomfortable conversation, but it's one that's probably going to have to be had at some point.
I'm willing to sit down and talk with any of you, all of you, about this. I about threw my glasses at you, Steve.
I would, I would say the same thing with, that we did with 911 Communications, also take the time to sit down with the, the sheriff and, and discuss this through, because it's something that we're gonna, we're gonna have to address in some way-
Right.
-soon, so.
Yeah, well, that's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
You sure?
Want to hear more from me?
I figure you might say more if you wanted.
Well, I could.
I'm going to take this opportunity to speak on behalf of Rick Spangler, our clerk was here, and I, I see that he stepped away, but for those of you who aren't aware, it is election season, so make sure that you're paying attention to where your polls are for, actually, a week from today is election day, and then you can come in to the county building here downtown to vote early, so keep that in mind, primaries are important.
All right, any other council members? All right, no more department heads? All right, I don't think we have any new business. I guess on the agenda, we left off public comment, but is, is there anybody that signed up for public comment on the sheet that's up there, or out in the hall? If so, step up now.
I didn't see a note on it.
Okay, all right.
We only had one, not really question per se, I guess it was a question, but more specific for HR, what recruitment efforts are being made to entice individuals to apply? We don't really have any, like, benefit package, like, we don't have anything, correct?
Because part-time people do not get benefits, they're paid days, yeah. My position, for instance, part-time, they don't get paid days off, they don't get benefits, so it's real hard to, come work for me for $10 an hour, now you don't get paid on a vacation day, or a-
Did all three of you have a part-time person at one time?
Yes, see-
She had one, she had one, and the A.
And they had one, see, that's our, going to be our fight, because we did have three part-time.
What about interns? Does anybody look into interns?
You know, the thing about interns, it's our, our, see, Ron, I'm not done.
I'm asking, you know, I wanted to be sure.
Yeah, well-
We've used interns, but-
But, well, the thing about our job interns is, they're only here for a semester.
Yep.
And so, you train them, and HR's a really tedious office, you just can't have anybody in there, that, that's why I like to hire from the outside, I don't want to hire from the inside, that everybody knows everyone. So, it's hard for me to hire an intern, unless they're going to scan all day, well, no, we want them to work, we need them to do input and stuff like that, so, we need someone that's going to stay with us a little longer than that.
Same for the courts, we have interns all the time, but it would take me longer to teach them something-
Right.
-than to just have them job shadow, and go look at things. I don't have time to-
Right.
...train somebody every little thing that we do, and then only be there for eight weeks.
Yeah.
So, bringing in an intern does not help us, it's more of a hindrance, because I'm now taking time out of my day to teach them something that I don't really have time to teach them. So, what we do with interns, we have them job shadow, because it's just not, there's just not enough time.
And they're not really any benefit to you?
They're not any benefit, no.
They're no benefit to us. When we went paperless in our department before, we had an intern up there that scanned all the copies and put them in our archive file, archive file, well, that was a great job for, but they didn't learn anything about HR.
They learned anything, yeah.
They didn't learn anything-
I'm on a copy machine.
Yeah, they didn't learn anything about HR, and we want them to, I mean, our office now is, Jody, do this, Ginger, do this, I mean, we're just constantly, and you need that person.
Well, I think in some of the offices that have used them, I think the auditor's office has used some interns before, and-
And it's probably worked, maybe you've worked for them.
Extension, yeah, I think in different, different places.
And I think it is different in each office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm done, Ron.
For now?
For now.
Thank you.
So, for Donna, Fred Cummings, 911 Director.
That was not me.
I didn't forget this time, I didn't forget this time.
It wasn't me any of those times.
So, so, so to further- Denise needs it on the record.
Hang on, he's trying to speak.
To go off what Ryan Webb said, and I wasn't going to speak, but I'm going to speak, because I don't know when to keep my mouth shut sometimes. It's not always easy to consolidate in departments, like, I'll use my department, right? I don't have the ability to consolidate and cut employees in order to pay more, more to employees, right? You know, if you look across the country, and I'll speak for my stuff, I can even speak towards, you know, the sheriff's stuff, annual stuff, stuff like that, you know, a lot of places across the country are, are offering, you know, hiring incentives, and, and, and all that stuff, and we can't afford to do that. One of the things I think we need to do, over the course of the next couple months, coming into budget season, is to evaluate every department, and, and if, if your idea works in some of those places, you know, to consolidate and maybe look at, at how to streamline that, that's fine. I think you also have to understand that every single department is different, right? You know, I, I use this example a lot, because a lot of people think that, you know, a 911 operator just answers the phone and talks on the radio, right? It's different than a job in the auditor's office, or the treasurer's office, or, or the tax office, right? You know, when they pick up the phone, it's, it's not, it's not somebody looking to ask a tax question, it's somebody that, whose, whose husband just collapsed in front of them, and you have to walk them through CPR, right? And, and as soon as they get off that phone, the next call that they answer may be, may be a car, a car accident where, where people are trapped, right? And, and, and five minutes later, they may answer a call that, that somebody's house is on fire, and, and somebody's trapped in the building, right? So, so when you look at, when you look at raises, and you look at what you should pay people, and, 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 you know, what benefits you give and everything else, you have to understand that there are differences between jobs, okay? That's, that's huge, because, because you can't, you can't operate under the mindset that, that if you give, if you give, you know, one employee a raise, you have to give the other employer a raise. I think it's, I think it's very much job-specific, and you have to, you have to look at the market, right? And you have to look at what other people are paying. And I, I think that's really, really important to remember, because I can tell you from personal experience, on Christmas Day last year, I answered a call from a woman that, whose husband had collapsed in front of them, right? And we had to walk her through CPR. And I'm very passionate about that, because, because it happened on Christmas Day, when, when the majority of county employees are home enjoying stuff with, with their families, right? Or, or the majority of, of any other workers, you, you have certain professions, especially in, in county government, that, that are out there working, and they're responding to shootings, and they're responding to stabbings in domestics, and they're answering phone calls from people that are having the worst day of their life, and they're doing it on Christmas Day, right? And I can say that from personal experience, because it happened to me. The other thing that I want to do, because I think it's appropriate, I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence. We did lose a dispatcher a week ago yesterday, Ron, that passed away, and I would like the council to observe a moment of silence for him.
Do you like to say something before we do that?
As far as?
Anything, or, or Ryan?
No, I think a moment of silence is fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Fred, I want you to say, I agree with almost every word you said up here, and I appreciate you making that point of clarification. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?